We will now go on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number eight, Unfinished Business. And before we go to that, I would like to say that, just for the citizens that have remained, in light of what has happened, we will be getting a revised budget
Resolution.
resolution that'll come back before the board at some point with the corrections and everything. So, I don't know when, but
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Monday. All right, item number eight under Unfinished Business, Health Department carryovers. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board at the last meeting, there was a motion and a second to start the 10-day layover for the Health Department's request for their unexpendable funds from the prior fiscal year. The staff recommendation is included in the board packet. This will require a roll call vote since we've already had a motion and second.
All right.
Any discussion?
Any discussion. Ready for the question?
Mr. Harville?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Sneed?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Hageman?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
Yes. Item nine, expenditure refunds. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, the August expenditure refunds are the amount of $39,930.60. There was a motion and a second at the last meeting to start the 10-day layover, which has now been met. We will need a roll call vote following discussions.
Any discussion? Call the rolls.
Mr. Harville?
Yes.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Sneed?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Hageman?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
Yes. We now have a presentation, item number 10, from the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And, Mr. Monday, do you want to introduce?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, we have two guests with us this evening that will be talking about the long-range transportation plan draft. We have David Hovak, the Executive Director of the West Piedmont Planning District Commission, and he'll be introducing his assistant from AECOM to help with that. So, Madam Chair, I just ask Mr. Hovak and the representative from AECOM to make the presentation info for the board's consideration.
Thank you, welcome, Mr. Hovak.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. In addition to serving as Executive Director of the Planning District Commission, I'm also the administrator for the Danville, Pennsylvania County, MPO, and that's why we're here tonight, to talk about the 2040 long-range transportation update for Danville and Pennsylvania County. We've been working on that most of this year. Your representatives on the MPO, Mr. Sneed is Chairman, Mr. Harville, and Mr. Barksdale all have been involved in this process. And, just kind of the long and the short of it is, it's a 25-year outlook that is updated every five years. It was last done in 2010. This is the 2015, updated to the year 2040 study. Basically, it's just looking at transportation needs, transportation issues, available projected funding going into the future, basically just a comprehensive outlook of transportation in Danville and Pennsylvania County. We are in a public comment period at this point in time. We'll be having a formal public hearing on October 21st at the Danville Regional Airport from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and we welcome anyone who would be interested and like to attend to come out for that meeting. You also can submit comments to the Planning District Office if you're unable to attend that event. We have the plan out for distribution in several different places. Here in Pennsylvania County, it's available at the County Administration Office and also at the library. It's also available at a couple of locations in Danville as well, and can also be accessed on the Planning District Commission's website, which is WPPDC.org. So, that's sort of where we stand at this point, and without belaboring you with any more details, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Bill Cashman. He's Vice President with AECOM, the consulting firm that's leading this update process. Bill is very familiar with the MPO. He's worked on CLRP updates here in the past, as well as some other transportation studies. So, Bill.
Madam Chair, Dave, could you briefly describe the MPO, what it takes care of in Pennsylvania County? Because I know it's a lot of you here in the outside. People keep asking me, especially I come to the board supervisors, and we had reviewed some of this, okay, some at last meeting, but they're confused. They think the MPO covers all of Danville and Pennsylvania County. Does it? It does cover all of Danville, but it does not cover all of Pennsylvania County. It comes up to the Spring Garden Road.
Right. Basically, it runs to the east on 58. It runs out generally to, out toward the Brasville area. It goes out in that direction to the east. It goes out basically to the Ringgold area.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain that because a lot of people come up to me from the Northern End of County, "Well, how come I rode in there? How come y'all ain't reviewing something for me?" And I said, "Well, you're not in the MPO." And I really didn't know the boundaries until several years ago, I asked the MPO to give us a map of the boundaries and found out Spring Garden Road was a cut.
Right. And we have provided you with some information here tonight that I've left with Clarence that gives a very detailed, very descriptive map of what the MPO
Good, thanks, Dave.
Sure.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Bill Cashman with AECOM. I'm in the Virginia Beach districts. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to give you a brief update on the update to the 2040 Long Range Plan. Over the past five years, the last update, there've been some major changes, and we have to look at the federal and state legislation. In the federal legislation, it's been updated with what's called MAP 21, and moving ahead for progress. And, the national goals they implemented in this emphasize safety, infrastructure conditions, congestion reduction. I won't go on, but you'll hear that recurring theme as I talk a little more. The biggest changes were at the state level, mainly within the last two years, where a House Bill 1887 was passed that changed the funding mechanism for VDOT, for roadways. And then, there was a House Bill Two that changed the way projects were prioritized, completely differently. So, we had to take all of this into account in developing the plan and selecting the projects. The main thing about House Bill Two is now projects are going to compete, if you will, for available funding. They will be scored. There are certain factors, and this is in the handout, but the factors are safety, congestion mitigation, economic development, which you just heard in the federal legislation. The state has come along in the same vein and incorporated those. And each one is weighted, and the waitings were recommended by the MPO Board and adopted by the Commonwealth Transportation Board. So, projects will be scored on how many accidents they reduce, do they improve congestion, do they help economic development? And while it's not the plan's role to actually score the projects, it is our role, because recognizing the funding is going to be competitive, to get a series of projects in the plan that can then compete successfully for the funding that will be available. Now, how much funding is available? It has been broken up now into some high priority projects statewide of the available funds, that's 27.5%. 27.5% for construction district grants in the Lynchburg District, the construction district of VDOT in which we're set. And then, state of good repair, which is statewide, and that's 45%. That does add up to 100%. How much money is that? Well, for the district grants, for example, in Lynchburg, it's for the six-year period starting fiscal year 17, it's about 36 million. So, it's about 6 million a year for projects for the entire district. Very competitive. And, when you look at that, when you look at the other factors that are involved, what we're seeing is that projects that are going to be successful can solve defined problems, can be fairly small, because there's going to be a lot of competition for these funds, and you can well expect that VDOT's going to need, feel the need, to spread them out so that, you know, one jurisdiction is not going to get them all. And with that leads us to the development of the Long Range Plan, and we put it up on the map over here. And while some of these projects look large, I want to clarify some, particularly those in the county, very quickly. This project, number two in the handout, is Kentuck Road, and it's not a widening of the road. There was a study done for the MPO that looked at three intersections and came up with recommendations. And essentially, putting those on this map and adding these in the projects gives us the ability to implement those now, because they are eligible, they'll be on the adopted plan, assuming the draft plan is adopted. And so, it's the kind of improvements that we talk about with the scoring. The same over here on Morefield Bridge Road, because it's intersections and geometric improvements. Now, we got over here on what is now U.S. Primary Route 311, and coming out to the industrial park. That is to improve the road to a better pavement section, anticipating as many as up to 5,000 employees successful at the park, and also interchange improvements in that area. There is also a bridge replacement, and bridge replacement funds are exempt from the House Bill Two competition. There is set asides for those type of improvements. There's also money set aside for specific and general safety improvements, so if a problem comes up, the funding does permit for those kind of improvements. Now, that is quite different from what we call our Vision Plan, and I'll just hold this up so you can see that. There are a lot of very long and very ambitious, and we like to call the Vision Plan aspirational, whereas the plan itself is a constrained long-range plan. These projects, a lot of these projects, we recognize would not be successful in scoring for House Bill Two. They'd have economic impacts, they'd have benefits, it would be hard to justify the cost. And so, with the plan we have, we think we have given an instrument that will help the county, the MPO, the city successfully compete for the available and scarce funds to get these projects funded. And, we have had three public meetings. Tonight is the first of meetings with the local governments, and Thursday night I'll be at the Danville City Council Meeting, and then, as Mr. Hovak said, we're looking for board action on October 21st. And with that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any more questions?
I have a question, I don't know if you can answer it or not. I understand what the MPO is. My concern is, being from a rural district, that we don't get a chance to compete on a level playing field for these funds. How do we decide the size and shape of this particular MPO district? How does that happen?
It is set up by characteristics of population around the urbanized area and density based on the census. So, it's some of the more dense areas of the county and contiguous to the city of Danville in that kind of analysis that is conducted, again, using updated census data.
Is that done by VDOT? Who actually decides the shape of these districts?
I expected would be VDOT. And, again, it's a direct output of the census data and the population by block and the density of the population within those areas.
And, Bill, I imagine that the Federal Highway Department, they have a stake in determining the size of the MPO districts as seen as well. Madam Chair, Elton, I've been on this thing ever since, been on the board. Elton, I would suggest, and if I lived in yours, it must behave as a district, I would definitely dig into this. Now, here years ago, they tried to do away with the MPO, and we fought it. All the MPOs got together, we went to Charlotte, still in Richmond, to keep the MPO intact. But, I think, you know, it's gotten married, and it's always bothered me that we cut off the Spring Garden Road, and there's really no means for the board to really get hands-on with the MPO, because it makes me feel bad when we set up here like we did last meeting to make motions to approve the Mount Cross to Kentuck. All these projects with all these funds in Northern End of County, you're not doing anything. And I've had a lot of questions for that, and it bothers me, because I like to see the whole county. But, Elton, my suggestion, you know, and my experience, you know, I definitely require this with VDOT, and if you could come to a MPO meeting, you could email Dave, and we have a federal representative, Elton, that comes to our meeting, and he can outline this and probably help you in this process of how we can get into it and how it would benefit us, if not, what funds do we have that you could use in the Northern End of County?
I would also add for clarification on the House Bill Two funding for the district grants. In the information, it shows who's eligible to put in for those grants, and local governments are eligible. It's not restricted just to MPO areas. So, if there's a need in the northern part of the county or a particular problem that you have, I'm sure if you got with your staff, it would be worth reviewing for consideration for a grant application.
Is there an MPO in the Lynchburg-Alta Vista area?
Yes.
So, would that MPO stretch to cover Hurt?
No, I don't believe so. I think it's just in the, what's called the Lynchburg urbanized area. And it includes parts of Campbell County as well, but not the whole of Campbell County.
Would he be able to apply for grants through that MPO as well as the one at this end?
Well, he's not, I don't think his area's in an MPO. So, it would have to be, if the project were applied for by the MPO, it would have to be in the MPO.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will be glad to attempt to find a little bit better answer for you on what the qualifying factors are for MPO participation, and I will send that back to Clarence and share it with the entire board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hovak.
I happen to know we have a fine foundation in this area.
Whose district does cover us and all the way up there, too. All right, with that, if there are no other comments or questions, we will move on to item number 11, and we have a presentation to be made by Mrs. Lori Moran.
Good evening. In 2014, we had 629 people in Pennsylvania County employed in the tourism industry, directly employed by businesses that were classified as tourism businesses by the state. That represented almost $13 million in payroll for the year and brought in local tax receipts of $1.9 million. The jobs were an increase of about 8% since 2010, and both the payroll and local tax receipts increased 14% in that five-year period. What is amazing about that number is that Pennsylvania County, nor Danville, has had a focused effort on tourism, dedicated resources to tourism for the past several years. Looking at the fact that tourism is a driver for our economy and can help this region grow, several of us started conversations a couple of years ago about what we could do as a region, as Danville and Pennsylvania County. About a year ago, Virginia Tourism Corporation came in, they held two planning meetings in the area, received input from a total of probably about 50 citizens, and different people affected by the tourism sector came out and participated in those meetings. Earlier this year, the chamber formed a committee, that's what you always love to do, is form a committee. But, we formed a committee that's going to work, Mr. Harville, and it's going to get results. So, we formed a committee that had representatives from both Pennsylvania County, Danville, the chamber, and from businesses that are tourism businesses, to talk about the results of that planning session, those two days that were held, and how we put that into a plan that we feel like is a doable plan for the region. You've got a one-page draft in your packet tonight, and what I wanted to come and do is just to give you a brief update on where we are, where we're planning to go, and use this as an opportunity to ask questions before we come back to you later with a full-blown proposal.
That's on page 123 for the board members.
Thank you. So, you'll see that we've looked at, from a vision standpoint, how Danville and Pennsylvania County will be a vibrant, prosperous community in southern Virginia that maintains its natural beauty, historical heritage, and unique attractions. And from our mission, we want to promote the unique cultural, historical, recreational, and natural resources of Danville and Pennsylvania County while preserving and enhancing our economic sustainability and quality of life. As we have talked as a committee, we've really seen that there were a couple of areas that we thought we needed to focus on, especially initially. We've got great assets already in this region. If you look at Pennsylvania County, we have lakes, we have rivers, we have the outdoors, we have wineries, we have the ag complex, we have the amenities that are bringing people here. Look at the number of people who come to Chatham Hall and Hargrave and spend dollars in this community while they're here. So, we know people are coming. The problem is, when they come, we don't always have a great coordinated effort on how to show them what all there is to do while they're here, to keep them here longer, and to hopefully to bring them back later. So, we believe that it's important that we look at a better way to market this region, especially to the people who are already coming here. And how do we keep those visitors coming here and spending more dollars here? You'll see, that's one of our objectives, is really looking at how we market the region. Is there a website people can go to right now and get all of their information? No. That's a huge opportunity for us. Are there opportunities in print materials where we do a better job in helping? And then, the other one is, how do we help all of our venues that people come to know what's available? So that if somebody comes into our community and they say what's there to do, that we have trained frontline staff that can answer that question for them, so that people know what is available. The other piece you'll see that we've looked at is really how to make this sustainable. Looking at a program that's just not a fly-by-night, but how do we sustain that? How do we give it organizational structure? And I think probably even the bottom, the fourth objective we've listed under that is how do we identify, track, and report measurable outcomes? Because I think it's important that we see that when we come back in a year, two years, three years, that that 629 jobs has grown. So, we believe this is a part of our economy where we can make a difference. We know we already have visitors coming here. They're coming here for work, they're coming here for pleasure, for family, they're coming here for schools. We want to make sure that when they come, that we can highlight this community as a great place, because oftentimes, it's people who visit who may end up coming back to locate here, whether they choose to live here or move a business here. So, that's where we are. Where we are going is, as a committee, is looking at, by the first of the year, coming back to the board. We'll go to city council as well, and we're going to the chamber board as well, with a plan that will detail what we're looking at, the objectives. And, of course, the question everybody asks, what are the resources that are required to do this? And resources are not always money in dollars. It can be human capital, as far as volunteers or staff, but looking at what we can do as a region to really capitalize on this sector of our economy. So, with that, I'll pause and see if there are any questions.
Madam Chair, I've always got questions. Actually, it's not questions, but you're talking about communications and putting things on the internet, you know, I'm all for that. But, I know when you, the chamber, when y'all had your event up in the home place, I had the opportunity to sit with Joe Williams and pick his mind on some of these things. And, you know, it's not only a venue, but it's a place to have weddings. Now, I've referred three couples to that, and he is booked solid. So, I think we need to get that out, and now they're having to go north to even then find a venue while they can have a wedding. So, this stuff right here is exactly the target we need. It's not only a venue, but it's a fun, nice setting that you can have a wedding that people scramble for all day.
We have all kinds of hidden gems in this community that people don't realize or know about, and when people come in for a wedding, a lot of them come and stay overnight. They spend money, they eat meals, they're putting tax dollars in this community, and then, the thing about visitors is they leave. They're not using our schools, they're not using our trash receptacles, they're not needing our, hopefully they're not needing our police services, but they come in and they invest money. So, I think venues and the venues that we have like that, we need to promote more of.
True, and you told them right, it's just like I know, because we invited them, and they up there, while they're going, you know, I hate to go out of town, I thought I'd rather just drive and come back home and sleep in my bed. You know, they got so many, you know how the wedding parties, they got so many rooms reserved for them. So, you told them right, that puts money in, and it's just like gentlemen, it's invested in the family. And they're not, they're making money per se, they invested money.
Mr. Barber?
Lori. We was talking, I had the idea, I thought about, I don't know if the chamber does this night. I know when we go out of town, which is rare, we want to go out of town, most of the motels have these, like, books that's got things to do in that area, events or anything. Do we do that in our motel, Lori? Because you was thinking about, when these people come and visit, and I'm sure when they're in the motel, they will look at those and see things we offer, and you can probably get restaurants to advertise them and pay for them, because I notice they always get them stuck in that, but that's a good way to kind of connect, show people what we got while they're in here. Do we do it?
Yeah. There are private companies right now that do some of that, but as far as a regional approach and what we're doing for the county and the city, no. So, again, I think the committee has talked about what are the appropriate pieces that we need to have, that we don't have, that we may be lacking, that we can do exactly what you're talking about, so that when people come in, there are hotels, or restaurants, or the attractions where people are coming, they've got something either to give to people, and at bare minimum, when they're asked the question, they know how to respond.
I know, you've done a motel in town, you get bored, you look at a thing, and then you see something that catches your interest. I do. So, I mean, that'd be a cheap way for us to advertise the area, if we could just wait for them to have one in the county motels. I'm sure you'd get some interest, and they'd see, because there's things, I've never been to one, there's things I don't even know about the county, and I lived here all my life, I think that would kind of, you know, wake people, what we offer here.
All right, one more thing that I would request, I talked to a gentleman here tonight, and I know him and his family, both, and you know him, he used to work with one of his daddy. But, we in desperate need of internet throughout our county, and we got the main trunks, and I know you right there, and you listen to a lot of these things at various meetings. But, if you get any information or any ideas, would you give it to Clarence? We need internet to branch out of these main trunks. Having a main truck up and down 58 to 29 is not worth a penny if you can't branch all those like with main water line. You need to get it out to the people. So, we need to, you know, request for grant funding, backup funding, you know, things like that, and try to work on the internet lines out in our counties.
That's one of our objectives, too, is to look at what's the infrastructure needed to grow this sector, so whether it's highways or internet, whatever it may be.
We're all ready, we need internet.
We do. We do.
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Ms. Hageman?
As a matter of fact, there was a gentleman sitting right back here this afternoon, when the meeting started, and he has been, I mean, that's been his one job in life right now is to get internet in the Callens-Gretina District, especially the climax district. And we do, we do need it desperately. But, one other thing I'd like to mention also, if maybe you or some of your people, if they ever would have time, to make a list of the positives and negatives, things that tourism might be interested in, and what we could do to move that on our way. Our county is missing that, and we need it desperately.
One of the steps we've taken, and I didn't go through all of them, is actually listing all of the assets we have in the tourism that we could identify. It was not only the group, and the group that met almost a year ago, but we sent that information to the three towns, we sent it to every attraction we could think of in the county, in the city, every hotel or bed and breakfast, and to make sure that we had the most comprehensive list, that we know what we have available to showcase to people. And then, also, trying to help understand when people come into these attractions, what are the most frequently asked questions? are the most frequently asked questions when they're here? And do the people on the front line know how to answer those questions? So we've been trying to do a lot of that work, and I think when we come back in a few months, you'll see a lot more of that.
And I would like, if no one else has anything, I would just like to finish up and let you know, I think most of the board members do know that I am on that committee that has been meeting for over a year. And I remember when we had the two-day work session, that we had a room with the huge flip chart sheets that just went all around like this, and we were identifying places, like you were saying, Mr. Hagman, spots of interest, places that are assets that we have in the city and the county. And we filled, I can't even think of how many sheets, and I learned there are places I had never heard of that existed. So that is the whole point of this, is to bring all of this together in a comprehensive, whether it's a brochure, or flyers, or whatever means we use to get it out on the front lines, on the counters of the hotels, the restaurants, et cetera. The Virginia Tourism Bureau also will help us develop the website at no cost to us. So as Ms. Moran mentioned, there are resources available to us that will not cost us money, and that's just a part of it. But they helped develop a website, and we've spent many hours talking about how we're going to pull together all that information from the city, the county, a calendar, calendar of the events, so that when people do look at Danville, Pennsylvania County on the website, and there's going to be a link that says tourism, it's going to take them to all of this. So there's been an awful lot of discussion, and like I said, it is a long list. We've talked about kiosks in different areas with directional signs, particularly here in Chatham, that will, you can stand in front of this building downstairs, and there will be signs that says, "The train depot is this way", you know, with an arrow and whatever. So, you know, all of these things are being discussed, and I will say that, just like Mr. Barber mentioned, when you mentioned the brochures, not too long ago, when VIR was having the tutor race here for two days, I personally took it upon myself to go around, we were promoting an event downtown as well, and I went around myself, I used my own money and made flyers talking about the events at the Bistro and VIR, and took it to all the hotel front lines, when all these drivers, these race car drivers were coming from all over the world, and I would see them piling into the hotels. And I went to the front desk, and I said, "Now, what do you say to people when they come up to the desk and say, 'What's there to do?'" "Where do I go around here? Where do I go get a good meal? What's to do?'" And so I handed her these flowers of just a particular event that I was interested in promoting, but it was for entertainment and dinner. And I said, "Would you please tell people that if they're looking for somewhere to go to dinner, this is a great event?" Or, because they were already here for VIR, they filled every one of our hotels. Then I went down to the Bistro, and I saw, sitting at every place, a coaster that VIR had placed in the restaurant. So see, it's a promoted that weekend. So it is a, it's a partnership with many, many businesses, supporting each other, and helping each other, and that kind of thing. So that's what this committee is doing, is trying to pull all this together. I'm excited for everything that's been going on for the last year, as this does come together. I look forward to the presentation that you will come back with. I guess after the first year, I'll be off the board, but I'll still be around and look forward to hearing about the results of it.
Thank you. And if anybody has questions or comments, you know where to find me, don't hesitate to call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, item number twelve, financial matters, Mr. Monday.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, item A that we have, expenditure refunds for September 2015 in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. All of those line items are outlined in the board packet on page one twenty-seven and one twenty-eight. At this meeting, the only thing we'll need is a motion and a second to start the ten-day layover process.
Mr. Blackstock.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure refund for the month of September in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Please second it, and this will be a ten-day layover. Item B, National Night Out Carrier, for Mr. Monday.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, the sheriff's night out still has in its balance donations totaling at year-end one thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Those are for exclusive use only. We do recommend appropriating the set amount to the sheriff's budget line item, and this will require a motion, a second, and a recorded vote.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barber.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
And roll call vote, Mr. Monday.
Mr. Harville.
Yes.
Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Mr. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Bartstall.
Yes.
Mr. Hagman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes. Item thirteen, Virginia Association of Counties Voting Credentials, page one thirty, Mr. Monday.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, the staff needs to send in our voting credentials for the annual business meeting at the VACO conference coming up next month, and as customary, the county decides who its voting delegate and alternate is for us to submit on the required paperwork.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion now, I don't agree with what's in the packet, said it passed the board has approved the chair, and then the vice chair. That's not correct. Maybe it would have been like it last year, but over the years, VACO don't require that. It's anybody, what it uses to discuss with the board members, and I have no problem with Ms. Vaughn, but she may have a committee meeting, and if she has a committee meeting and her name is submitted, all she has to do is get with the committee and tell them Mr. Snee or whoever is going to vote. So really, I'll make a motion that we authorize out of chairman to be the voting credentials, and that way she can, if she's in a meeting or obligated, she can give somebody else a vote.
Second.
All right, and I will say that in the past, it's worked out, if somebody does have to step out of the business meeting or go to a committee meeting, we do designate or find somebody among us to cover for us. So you're saying that we don't even need to worry about naming an alternate, just the motion is just to nominate me, and then if I have to step out for any purpose, then I can just pull somebody in?
True. But your name does have to be submitted while you do.
Right, there's a horn here. Any other discussion? With the motion and the second, no discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Item number fourteen, the Public-Private Education and Instruction Act, Design, Build, and Recreation Act.
Mr. Hunt would take this one.
Recently, the board has expressed an interest in both PPEA and Design-Bill procurement. Just so everybody's clear, I'm not asking for information tonight, and it's late, and this is a lot of material, so if anybody between now and the next meeting doesn't understand this fully or wants a private tutoring session, just please contact me and I'll let you know. But right now, we don't have all of the procurement tools that the Virginia Code allows in our toolbox to use. Two of them that we don't have are Design-Bill and the PPEA. If the board desires to utilize these in the future, it's required by state law to adopt and make public via resolution or ordinance guidelines that detail how the county's going to use both the PPEA and the Design-Bill. And Design-Bill is, both of these are very positive things, and they're very forward-thinking, and a lot of localities are using these. And this, especially Design-Bill, may be something that the board, probably the future board, desires to use for potentially the animal shelter project. But Design-Bill is authorized by Virginia Code, section two point two, four, three oh eight, and it allows locality, after they've adopted these guidelines, to enter into contract with a construction firm on a fixed price or not to exceed Design-Bill basis. Meaning, once you have these guidelines, you put out your specs, and people come to you and tell you what it's going to cost. And what the benefit of this is that it helps design, helps mitigate and minimize project risk for the locality, the project owner. It also reduces the delivery schedule by providing an overlap of both the project design and the project construction phases. The benefits of Design-Bill are many, but basically, it causes a faster project completion time, a single point of responsibility, you have one person who's building it and designing it, you don't have a lot of chefs in the kitchen, and you control your costs. The PPEA, although the name implies that it's the Public-Private Educational Act of two thousand and two, it's actually much more expansive than that. Local governments, it allows local governments to enter into public-private partnership and bring in private expertise in design for the acquisition, design, construction, improvement, renovation, expansion, equipping, maintenance, operation, implementation, or installation of educational facilities, technology, infrastructure, or other public infrastructures and government facilities that serve the public need and the public purpose. If the board desires to do these two things and utilize these two procurement tools, they're required to adopt these guidelines and resolutions. I have placed these in the packet. I'm not asking for any action tonight, but if the board so directs, we can certainly bring them back to you for action in the future. If you adopt these guidelines by these resolutions, it doesn't mean you ever have to use them, it just enables you to use them potentially in the future, so.
So do you plan to bring this back for a motion next time, or?
If that's the direction of the board, so if I'm directed, we can bring it back for action, potentially either next meeting or sometime in the future. Or if you want to have a tutoring session on it, we can certainly do that as well. But it's basically, typically under the state code, construction has to be done by competitive sealed bid. You put out a RFP, somebody gives you a sealed bid, you open it, and you go from there. These are alternate methods of procurement that are allowed by the state code. But if you use those, you have to have a resolution, and you have to adopt the guidelines. And the guidelines that are in your packet, I didn't recreate the wheel, these are model ordinances that were developed by the state. I just edited them, changed some names around, and these are basically the guidelines that everybody who chooses to do this has utilized.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to comment on that. Mr. Blackstock and I are well familiar with that, and we've discussed that a lot, and with Mr. Monday and VACO, this is a great, great thing to have in our orders. You don't have to use it, but at times, I have seen counties and localities save thousands and thousands of dollars by this, and you can get these things down where it's affordable, and that's the part I like. Like I say, you don't have to adopt them, I mean, have to use them, you can go with the bidding process others, but this is a tool, you would have any orders that if you choose to use it, and it benefits you, it's very, very good. And I would recommend, the board members don't understand it, to get with VACO, go through this, go to vote on it, because it's a good thing.
Any other comments? Would you like to vote on it tonight, or would you like more time to look at it?
I'd sit on next to the gentleman, we can have a read.
All right, so right, to the next, next meeting. All right.
That's all.
Okay, at this time, board announcements? Mr. Harville?
I have to.
Mr. Barber.
Madam Chair, I'd like to get you to amend the agenda, I got a resignation and a appointment. I need to make that, I thought you had a appointment on here, I can come in today and see.
Well, I think, Madam Chair, what he needs is a motion to amend, go back and amend the agenda and add this to it since it wasn't on there.
Do you have, you got to do it tonight?
Yes, he's got everything.
Okay, all right, well, would you make your motion?
I didn't get it to the one minute, but then you can. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add the board announcements, resignation, I mean, appointment, West Piedmont planning, or can I do it on one, or do I need to do separate?
Separate.
Separate.
Separate the resignation and then I'll do the.
Okay, okay.
Ain't a way we can't give.
Okay, the motion is to amend the agenda, that has to be, that's adding an item, so that has to be.
Yeah, a form, a reservation and a appointment.
So that has to be announced, going to be doing that. So the motion is to add it, and there's a second, two seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, for him to add, this is just to add it. Okay, that's the seven oh, and now make your motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I do the resignation, but I got a letter from Mr. Ed Hurston, says, "Members of the board, I would like to thank you for allowing me to serve the West Piedmont Planning Commission, and I appreciate the opportunity to contribute for the veteran or our community, however difficult the scheduling conflicts, I am resigning my position." And so thank you immediately. It's Mr. Ed Hurston, West Piedmont Planning Commission.
I second you.
I can make a motion, we accept.
All in favor.
Okay, and also, to replace him, I'd like to nominate Ms. Wendy Burnett Cook, she owns Draft and My Design, and she's very excited and willing to serve for this position. I got her address here for this. So the Wendy Burnett Cook, I'd like to make a motion, we accept Ms. Wendy Burnett Cook to take this turn and replace on West Piedmont Planning Commission.
Second.
And then she has a question, is that a county wide or a district department?
It's county wide.
It's at large, yeah.
It's at large.
At large.
Well, say, last time, we were saying Philip and Mr. Hurst did stuff to do it, I guess it's just, does this mean it's there?
Yeah, it's just a. It's at large.
And she's actually not, I'm calling for West.
She's in my district, but it's at large.
It is at large, it's really a wonderful thing, but she.
In term, this is December point sixteen. All right, any other comments, questions, all in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, no, we're leaving.
Yes, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. All right, now, board announcements, go back.
Yeah.
I'm wearing blue today, I watched the turtle today, so I'm not.
I'm wearing blue today for the bully awareness week. If you don't understand about bullying, if you do, talk to me, I know plenty about bullying.
Bully awareness.
Bully awareness, that's why I'm wearing blue. It's the second-leading cause of suicide, partially is depression. Also, I was informed of a lot I written in the paper, which is okay, because I didn't flip and flop on my vote, and I knew I was not. But anyway, I don't get to reach to me, I don't read it, there's nothing in it, but I was informed by humorous calls today about that, along with the solid waste fee. But anyway, I know several board members in the past have been, had problems with writing any articles, I never have, and it doesn't bother me, I believe in sticks and stones. It may break me, it may cut me, but you know what, words do not hurt me. But anyway, I just want you to know. And also, I would like to know, and my district has asked me to put the progress on the boat landing that the county pushed so hard up in Mr. Harville's district.
What was the question, Mr. Snee? The boat landing.
The boat landing in Mr. Harville's district.
It's been, it's been worked on, there's no.
Can you ask the question, could you ask the question, Mr. Monday?
I asked the question, Mr. Monday. Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd be happy to answer the question. It was a grant application submitted for a river access point. The cost estimates that the staff had, there was just a preliminary cost estimate, was around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So far, the only funding that we've been able to come up with is a thirty thousand dollar grant. That grant has been accepted conditionally, that we get the costs down to where it's affordable, and/or leverage other funding sources for that. As Mr. Harville pointed out, Mr. Moore, Director of Parks and Recreation, is still working with DCR, and any other sources that he can potentially tap for that. But unless we find the funding, it's going to be difficult, but we are still working.
And I like to piggyback on that, I mean, you don't say it, if you want to know something, ask me. But anyway, I had Davis Montgomery down here from Duke, working on this, I'm sincere about this, Mr. Monday and myself, and Mark Moore met, and, you know, I'm going to hold Duke, speak to the fire, we want some, I told him when we left, what Mr. Monday can take, we want some funding. So, I mean, any of you got any, if you want to get out here and work, work on that. I mean, I'd challenge any help, but we need that boat ramp for the citizens of this county, because we got people coming from Red down to the Abrew Grove to put in, so, any help is welcome.
Done over here. Thanks. Ms. Haylen?
Yes. I got a few announcements. On October day, there'll be a domestic violence program held at the Ag Center at six P.M. Anyone interested in coming can purchase tickets at seeing these restaurants on Forty West. Number two, October the tenth, the Climax Ruption Club will have their sorghum festival from nine, from nine A.M. until five P.M. There's supposed to be lots of vendors and stew, fried pies, baked goods for sale. Number three, October seventeenth, Gretna will be having the Old Timer's Jubilee from nine A.M. to three P.M. That'll be right in downtown Gretna. Number four, October twenty-fourth, council hosts their fall festival from nine to five P.M. And that's all for me. I'd like to see everybody come up there.
It should be dry, I think.
I hope so.
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, before you sound off, I did forget one main thing. Don't forget, October the tenth, the dog, animal shelter adopted dogs for five dollars. Now, I challenge any board member to keep up with me. I've got two oil change and tire rotations for prizes that day. I've got five projects, five prizes from Petco, Pet Store. I've got two twenty-pound buckets of Purino top-notch dog food so far, and I'm working on more.
Thank you.
So we need to make this a success the first, and have it impressive. And we need to step forward in these projects and have more of them, and get these dogs adopted.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things to remind you that this Wednesday morning, October seventh, at seven thirty, at, we at the Ag Complex, right? At the Ag Complex, seven thirty, early in the morning, the Chamber, Breakfast and Supervisor Forum, all of the, well, everybody but Mr. Harville and I, I believe, will be on that panel. And then, of course, the other candidates that are running. So all supervisors, I think there's a total of, is it thirteen or eleven? Thirteen. Thirteen supervisors will be introducing themselves to you. And that, again, that's this Wednesday, seven thirty at the Ag Complex. And anyone can attend. If you're not a Chamber member, you can still attend at a different fee, and just check with the Chamber. That's October seventh.
Seven thirty, eight?
Seven, yes, A.M. It's breakfast. And then, Mr. Sneed was mentioning the letters to the editor. I seem to be the grunt of all the letters that have been written this year. But again, I don't write letters either. I don't think most of the board members do. We don't write letters to the editor, and we certainly don't write about our colleagues. And then last but not least, I just have a question. You said that Bully, that it's Bully Week?
Bully Awareness.
Bully Awareness Week. Is that just in schools?
No, that's all over the nation.
All over the nation?
Second cause of suicide.
Does it include the board? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Maybe I should have been bullied for a long time.